Okay, you've got everybody now, I think?
I believe so.
Okay, if we could, we're gonna go ahead and open the meeting with the pledge to allegiance of the good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands, one union, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, and by all.
And justice by all.
I know it's hard, especially when everybody's muted. Now, too, I heard that these meetings are pretty hard to listen to sometimes. You can barely hear us. So if you are not going to speak, if you could keep your mics muted, then you'll be able to hear better. We won't get any feedback. The first order of business is the consent agenda. Does anybody on the board have anything that they want to add or delete that's on the agenda? I kept it pretty sparse. Okay, hearing none. If I could, I'd like to make one amendment. I have teacher staff community comments at the beginning. I would like to, with the board's permission, move it down to under the co-principals' report. So the superintendent and the principals have a chance to talk before because I think they're gonna answer a lot of questions from the public. So if I have permission, I'd like to move that down. Board members?
Yeah, that's fine. When, uh?
Do you need a motion or no?
I'm okay with that. Timmy?
This is Matt. I would, uh, I'm okay with that and I'd just make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Ross. Okay. So Matt made it, Ross seconded it, Corinne thirded it. If, all in favor?
Aye.
Corinne, you're all set with that?
Yeah, are you not hearing me well? Can you hear me?
Off and on, I can hear you fine now.
Okay.
So that was unanimous. Finance, Louis, I think you're up first?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Uh, so included in the packet were some financials. There is a summary, which is the first page. I'm gonna go over that first. So Rutland ended the year with a surplus of $186,000. This is a lot more than we forecasted previous to COVID. And many of the items that are resulting in the surplus were due to school closures and COVID. And I listed a majority of those significant increases. So we had some school tuition savings for $136,000. Only a small piece of that is due to school closure. We had $30,000 in professional services savings. This is all directly related to school closure and resulted from Kelly Services not being used and their SRO officer not being used during the school closure. We had $5,000 in fuel savings due to lower fuel prices. The prices of fuel went down significantly after school closure, so we filled up our tanks and we had some fuel savings. We had $56,000 in supplies and dues savings. Some of this was planned previous to school closure. We had, we were expecting a very tight year and so we had planned on not spending all of our supply lines and having some savings. But then we had some additional savings on top of that due to the school closure because we were pretty much froze budgets where we could because of the unknown, as well as with students not in school, we just weren't spending as much. We had $110,000 in HVAC savings. We knew about most of this, but not all of it. We did part of the project last year due to some extra funds that we had available, so we knew about those savings. That was about $75,000. But then we planned on spending another 60 this year to replace some of the ventilat- vent ventilation units. But due to the price to replace those, we ended up just refurbishing the units that we had. So that resulted in approximately $40,000 in save, additional savings that we didn't know about until pretty much close to the end of the year. We had $34,000 in transportation savings due to school closure. So we did receive a credit from our Betcha or SDA of Vermont for fuel savings, labor credits because they laid off many of their employees, and then just some other savings in the contract, which resulted in about $34,000. We had a $25,000 special ed assessment refund due to the SU special ed fund ending in a surplus. And then, so those are all the positives, and then we had two negatives. The first one is $46,000 and disallowed fed expense. This is where we had staff members that worked for the SU through the special ed department and their time that was spent in schools was more than what we estimated for regular ed work. And so those, that regular ed work is not allowed under special ed rule. So we have to build back the individual districts for the time that disallowed under special ed regulation. And that's $46,000. We're gonna go over that in a little bit more detail in another minute, and that's the next, the next page. And then the last item is $165,000. We were over budget in salaries and benefits. Most of this, actually all of this, we knew about prior to the end of the year this year. Many of these positions were hired at the end of last year after the budget was already set. And so that was the reason we knew we were gonna have a tight budget year and possibly end in a deficit. We were, administrators and I worked together to find savings throughout the budget to make up for that salaries and benefits that we knew were gonna be over. So all of those things combined resulted in the $186,000 surplus, which is great news that'll be going into, into the FY '22 budget, which will allow us to, a little bit of flexibility possibly in the budget process. We know there's still a lot of unknowns at the state level in what the FY '22 budget is going to look like, but this definitely having a surplus will be a step in the direction. Also, for your, just for your records, I've listed some of our fund balances that we ended the year with. So we still have a technology fund with $505 in it. We have the HRA reserve. That's where we're, we're putting all of the budgeted HRA money into this, into this reserve and then as it's used, as employees have claims with hospitals and we use that, we pull from that reserve. So we ended the year with $3,800 still in that reserve. However, I mean, the year is closed, but claims are still coming in because there is a lag. So that will continue to be depleted as we continue into July and August. Capital improvement fund, $17,000. That's been there for, for a number of years. And then the bond fund for $212,000. And then a scholarship fund for $1,400. In the packet also should have been some revenue and expense reports for the board's review, and if you have any quest, specific questions on those, you could either ask them tonight, or you could email me with specific questions, or we can discuss them at a future meeting. So any questions on that before I move on to the next page?
Louis, this is Matt. I just wanted to double check the amount of the surplus for this year. Great, thank you.
And as I stated before, I mean, we forecasted us coming pretty close to breakeven this year, but many of these savings that resulted in a surplus were due to school closure at the time that we had done that last forecast was unknown.
Louis, if I could ask, I know that the state has wanted us to hand in a COVID list of money spent on that. Is any of that figured into this?
Uh, so what we've done, what, what, um, we didn't have a lot of COVID-related expenses in FY '20. We did have some. They ranged from $3,000 to $5,000 per district. The reason we didn't have a lot of expenses, we, we had some cleaning supplies, we had some PPE, we had some technology purchases, but not significant. We're gonna see a lot of our significant COVID-related expenses in FY '21. The schools have started purchasing a lot of PPE. They're purchasing divide, like classroom dividers, plastic glass, stuff for the classrooms. Greg, our technology coordinator, is buying Chromebooks for students, laptops for teachers. So a lot of our expenses are gonna come into FY '21. But with the stuff that did fall into FY '20, I've moved that all to a COVID fund. And I've created an accounts receivable from the state to zero that COVID fund out. And so I have all the records waiting for the application process to come down to us from the state. They, as of today, they still have not sent that application in the process out to, to schools. So once that comes out, we'll be submitting for reimbursement. Now, when we do receive that reimbursement, it will not affect the ed fund because these were unbudgeted expenses. So we should receive reimbursement at 100%, which will offset that accounts receivable that I created. Same thing with FY '21 expenses that are unbudgeted. I'll be creating receivable for those and we'll be waiting for reimbursement. That will not, will not affect the ed fund.
Okay, because now that, the reimbursement, I know you haven't got the application, but it's, didn't they state that it's first come, first served? So if we delayed in submitting our stuff, we may not get any money back? Is that true?
Uh, well, there's a set money that's available for the whole state. So I, I think what they're gonna do is they're gonna see what they have in for applications once that money comes available. And if they have $12 million available and they get $24 million in applications, then they'll pay 50 cents on the dollar. I'm speculating, they really have not specified how they're going to do that. There may be potential for more money down the road from, from federal grants. But even if it is for some first serve, no one has submitted applications yet because the application process has not been released. So as soon as it's released, I'll submit.
Okay, great. Anyone have any on the board have any questions for Louis on this so far? Okay, Louis.
Okay, so the, the second page talks more about the disallowed expense for special ed. So what this shows is all of the positions that are contracted at the SU but work directly for Rutland Town School. So you have five teachers that are on this list and a bunch of paras. And so what I've done is I've listed what we've budgeted for disallowed amount. So when we did the FY '20 budget process, we budgeted that 15% of a paris salary and benefits would be disallowed based on the time that they're either working with regular ed students, doing duties before or after school, when they're not working directly with special ed students. So we budgeted 15%. And then for special educators for FY '20, we budgeted 0%. We've, for FY '21, we did increase that to 5% for special educators, and we did leave the paras at 15%. So I showed what the budgeted disallowed percentage was, what our actual disallowed percentage was, and then the variance. So for paras, we budgeted 15%, but the average came in at 18%. So that's not, I mean, not too far off. And then the average special educator disallowed came in at 2%. The big problem affecting Rutland Town, our percentages are pretty close, but the, the big problem is that we only budgeted for four special ed teachers and five paras. And we actually ended the year with five special educators and 11 paras. So for those, for that additional one special educator and six paras, we budgeted 0% disallowed. And so that's really where it added up to the $46,000. The offset to that $46,000 extra that we had to pay for the disallowed amount would be the GRCSU special ed assessment. Because by allowing special ed costs, it decreased the amount we were spending in the special ed fund, which resulted in the special ed fund having a surplus. So if you take the $46,000 and disallowed minus $25,000 in special ed assessment refund, our total variance for special ed is $20,000, $21,000. So not too significant for a district your size and the amount of employees you have. Any questions on that? Does everybody understand the whole disallowed and what that's for? I know we've discussed it at previous meetings, but if you, if you're, if you're new to the board, you may have some questions. We will be discussing this more at the SU board meeting. But just, just quickly again, I mean, so for like a special ed teacher, if they're doing a recess duty or a lunch duty, or they're working with a regular ed student, that time that they're spending doing those responsibilities or duties does not count towards special ed reimbursement, and therefore we cannot claim it under the special ed fund at the SU. And those amounts would need to be billed back directly to the district that that staff is working for. Any questions from the board?
Sean, do you know who is not, who's unmuted that's talking in the background? Never mind, I think they muted.
Thank you, I was muted too.
So that's the end of my report. If there's any questions, I can answer them. And if, if you don't answer tonight, ask it tonight and you are reviewing the packet and come up with the meat, uh, question either at the SU board meeting or, or anytime in the next month or so, just shoot me an email and I could help answer your question.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do you have any more questions for Louis? Louis, are you still on? Go ahead. Louis, are you still on vacation?
No, I'm back today.
Oh, welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, admin, principal, superintendent, do you have anything for Louis or can he sign off for the night?
Thanks, Louis.
Thanks, Louis.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Night. Okay, we'll go back to the agenda. We have director's orders. There was pretty small orders. I didn't see anything. Matt, did you see anything on there?
Nothing.
Okay. So I'll let that go. I did sign those off. Now, we have quite a few minutes. We need approval for minutes of May 11th. Do I have a motion from any board members for May 11th?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes from the May 11th meeting. This is Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Do I have a second?
I'll suck it.
Thank you, Corinne. Are there any questions, comments, additions, deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, I need a motion for the meeting on June 3rd.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes for June 3rd.
Thank you.
This is Matt.
I'll suck it again.
Thank you, Corinne. Any additions, deletions, questions?
I read it over, looked at it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I was just saying, I looked over all the minutes. Everything looked okay and complete. I mean, I saw a couple things that were very minor, but I didn't see anything in any of the meeting minutes for May, June, or July that looked off to me.
Well, thank you, Matt. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
July 13th, motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the July 13th meeting.
I'll suck it.
Okay, Louis, I think you beat her.
Sorry, Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all of those are approved unanimously. Chris, superintendent, your turn.
All right, thanks, Lynette.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. Chris, one second, let me interrupt you real quick. If everybody on the phone during the superintendent's and principal's report, if you would love them, most of this is going to be updates on the reopening of schools. Hopefully, most of your questions that are on for will be answered. Keep in mind that no names are to be used if you make any comments or ask questions. We cannot use names. And because of the number of people we have calling in, when we get to the comments or questions, we're gonna have to put a five-minute maximum on each person. Chris, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Lynette. So I will be rather brief, because I know that most of these will be addressed in the questions following the principal's report, but this past month has been centered solely around the reopening plan. And we, we, admin team, the task force groups, staff members, Dr. Ciccarelli have put together a plan which we feel as of today meets our needs. And the plan really is for a four-day in-person learning model with one day of remote learning that, so the one-day remote learning would be on Wednesday, and that'd be for all students. And that's what we would like to open up with. We say that's what we'd like to open up with because in a couple weeks' time, when the state moves us into step three, we feel that we're in a good place, we then would move to a five-day learning model of in-person learning. The one caveat that we have that other schools around us may not have is the fact that we are also offering a remote learning option, which I know there's a lot of discussion around the remote learning option in terms of what that is or what that looks like. And in fact, we have Lisa Madison on the, on the call as well, so let's all ask her to kind of talk a little bit more in detail about the remote learning option. But I just want to say that there has been a lot of discussion around the idea of this synchronous model. And what we're, what we're trying to impress upon is the fact that we do not want or see our students sitting in front of a computer stream, screen for, you know, eight hours a day, live streaming or watching a live stream of the classes. We don't feel that that deal. I have a 10-year-old at home. I would not want my 10-year-old sitting there staring at a computer screen all day. My wife and I are trying to actually find ways to limit the amount of screen time for my daughter, and we don't feel this is best practice. So what we're looking at really is a balance between a synchronous and asynchronous model, which is what a good effective teacher really is regardless. In this real learning model, there will be times during the course of the day where a student will have to log in and interact with, interact maybe a small group or, you know, touch base with their classroom teacher, whether it be like just a Q and A session, might be some direct instruction, or it might just be something else. But we really look to build in a lot of movement breaks, brain breaks, a lot of the things during the course of the day. So Lisa, is there anything you want to add to that? I know I just can go to the surface, but I know you do a much better job of explaining because your task force has really put together a nice model.
Thanks, Chris. We're, we're trying to release a frequently asked questions document for families within the next week that will go into more detail in some of these as well. But the, the basis of our remote learning model at this time is that all teachers will be delivering instruction through Google Classroom. So there's one place for families and students to log on for all of their assignments, for all of their teachers. In addition, at the beginning of the week, each teacher or for the elementary group, each teacher group will release a menu for the week. So again, students have one place to go where they can see all of their information from the teacher, they can see what times they need to log on each day, they can see what their assignments are for the week. If they need to access another software platform like Alexia or DreamBox platform, it will be right in there, what the expectation is for their use with that. And so then students and families can plan for the week and can make sure that they know what's coming up. The model does expect that students learning remotely will be available during the school day, as that's when we have our teaching faculty, obviously, working. So teachers' regular workday is the workday. So if a seventh grader needs to access their math teacher to ask questions, then they would need to do that during their seventh grade math time as per the school's master schedule. And same at elementary. If a second grader needs to log on for a foundations lesson, then their teacher would tell the family what time it is that they need to log on for that lesson as well. So again, as, to reiterate what Chris said, the expectation is not live streaming all the time. You know, it will really be, you know, okay, at 8:30 you have morning meeting, at 10:15 we have a math mini lesson that might last 15 minutes, and then you're gonna go off and do some DreamBox and do some of your own practice problems. Social studies is at 1:15, you know, and then Tuesday you might log on at a different time for your science lesson or for a small reading group, depending on the, the schedule for the teacher. But folks should know all of that at the beginning of the week in advance, and we're working on the, the details and the timing. We've also created a template for that weekly learning menu and schedule so that, again, families get to be really, and students get to be really familiar with the format. It's not every teacher has a different format for their schedule, but that there's, there's consistency so that across the building, it'll look the same no matter which teacher is doing the assignment, so students and families can have an easy time navigating that.
Great, thanks, Lisa. And another nice thing about this model, this is gonna be a very disruptive year. I, I don't think any of us could tell you any differently, that's, it's gonna be a challenging year for the staff, for parents, for families, for communities. And I think the one thing that this model does allows for a lot of flexibility, that's regardless of what, you know, step we're in or what model we're in, you know, five-day in-person, full-day remote, or somewhere in between, this model can move seamlessly between those three different scenarios. And I know that there will be some times during the course of the year in which we'll be remote learning, whether it be just because of a snow day. And the snow days will change this year because there really should be no need for us to have a day off. Now, we can move to a remote learning day, and this model will allow for our students to just move seamlessly into that remote learning model during the course of that day. Or if we have to, you know, shut down for a variety of reasons, whether it be just because of staffing or because of health concerns, that we can quickly move to this. And, you know, so for, the task force has done a nice job of putting this plan together, I think, and looking at some of the plans around the state, I think this is very progressive. I think it's, it's done with the students' best interests in mind, and I think it also responded to a lot of the, you know, parent feedback and staff feedback from our surveys last spring. So the, the one thing I wanted to stress also is the Wednesday model. And I know there were some questions when I presented this at the GRCSU meeting in terms of why we feel that we need a Wednesday off. And there are a couple of reasons for that. I know that, you know, Sarah and Debbie have done a nice job of, you know, working through a lot of different plans. This, this is a logistical nightmare, and we're not gonna tell you any differently. It really is. From an operations or standpoint, we're asking, you know, Sarah, Debbie, and the teaching staff and everyone in the building to re-engineer the school, and that can be a very difficult process to do. And so, you know, as we put together procedures, which we'll, you know, put the students and staff in a very safe and healthy environment, we also know that there might be some alterations that need to be made. And so if, you know, coming back on Tuesday, the eighth, for day of school, we then will move into the following day of remote learning, which will be nice because allows the staff at Rutland Town the opportunity to sit there and just kind of self-assess and look at what went well, what didn't go well. So therefore, when the kids come back into school on Thursday, we have, you know, a better procedural plan in place. Because like I said, we've done a lot of theoretical planning, but I think once you get everybody in the building, that's when, you know, theory becomes practice and we realize things that might need to be changed. So this Wednesday model allows for that flexibility for us to really ensure a safe and healthy environment for both the students and the staff. It also allows for a deep clean. We are asking our maintenance to, you know, to do a lot during the course of a week, you know, not that they don't do in a normal year. Uh, you know, not that they don't do in a normal year, but, uh, you know, there will be deep cleaning every day. But, you know, Wednesdays will be an opportunity for them to do a deep clean of all areas of the building, to get a pitch upon some, uh, some projects that they weren't able to do because of their focus on cleaning on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, as well as to assist in other buildings as necessary. Uh, and last, this provides, uh, staff with an opportunity to, you know, professional, to help collaborate, uh, you know, take a breath, uh, also just, you know, and continue to work with our students in one-to-one or small group environments. Um, so like I said, I'm sure there'll be, uh, you know, a good amount of questions that you may have, uh, that, you know, we're more happy to answer, at least we're more happy to answer after the, uh, the principal's report. So, thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, principals' report. Debbie or Sarah, who wants to go first?
I was trying to unmute, sorry. Hi, everyone. It's good to see some of you. And here are here from others. Um, so I'll just take kind of the top half, Debbie, and you'll do building matters.
Yep.
Um, so we were really excited to meet with Marie Gilman. She's our new, um, director of tapestry. Um, so tapestry will, um, start on September fourteenth. Tapestry will be in the cafeteria, um, which will, you know, create that easy entry and exit, which is great. Um, we have listed our class numbers in our principal's report. Um, we have had a handful. It always happens every year when we have a large cohort of kids. We get the same number of kids enrolling in that large cohort. Um, so we have three, decided to make three sections of fourth grade 'cause we tend to have forty-four kids coming into that grade. Um, so Lino Mullen will be joining our two fourth-grade teachers. So we have about three hundred and fifty-six kids for total enrollment. And we had on our principal's report twenty-six have signed up for remote learning. We're looking at about thirty-one right now, um, currently pre-K through eighth grade. Um, bussing, a huge thank you to our families that have offered, um, to change their schedules and working with neighbors, et cetera, to drive their children to and from school. That's really gonna help. Um, and we have been working with front office staff about just the logistics, like everything else, and how we can best to pick up and drop off. Um, so we have approximately seventeen to thirty-five kids, um, riding each bus. Um, again, we're staggering the arrival and dismissal time. Um, and parents that are able to drive their children to and from school, um, Pam Mock in the office is communicating with those families so they know where their drop-off is because we have a couple of locations where drop-off and pickup is and what time. And they're making a tag for their car, so they'll also have that in their vehicle. And we'll probably do something similar for kids' backpacks just to make it easier. Debbie, you want to talk building?
Sure. In terms of the building, we're continuing to work on our reopening plan. Um, there's a variety of things that we have to do to get ready for that. Um, our new woodchips have been delivered and those are being spread under the place structures out back for safety considerations. We have new flooring that's just being finished up this week in the nurse's office. So that's almost all set to go. Um, and all of the trim around the building is being repainted, so everything looks really nice. Uh, our rooms are being prepared, um, for physical distancing. We wanna thank our new director of maintenance, Kelly Trae. He's done a great job. He's met individually with teachers to help plan for how to space the rooms out. Dr. Ciccarelli started by coming around with, um, Kelly and Lisa Lones and I to kind of look at the building overall. And then he met with each teacher individually to go over that and decide what should be removed, what could safely be cleaned, um, so that we're prepared and get the proper furnishings that, um, are required for that social, um, and physical distancing. Um, he's also working with Efficiency Vermont there in looking for some grant funding for other ways to maximize our circulation, um, because of COVID concerns. So looking at maybe some negative pressure for the nurse's office, things like that, that we might be able to take advantage of with that, those grant funds. So he's working on that. Um, he's also creating some cleaning protocols and schedules for the buildings and the grounds. Um, we're working out, um, exactly how we're going to clean the place structure. Um, it has to be disinfected three times a day, so we're working on that. And, uh, he's working on securing, uh, wipes and sanitizer for the school. That's harder than you think. So we like to thank Kelly for all his hard work in, in getting us settled. Um, we're also looking at, uh, putting some kind of lines down the hallways so that students, when they do go in the hallways, are going, um, staying on their side and looking at using our outside doors for access to the outside as much as possible so that students don't have to pass each other in the hallways. We can do that. We're fortunate to be on the ground floor and have all those exits. So that's it for building matters right now.
Okay, a couple of things. Um, could one of you run, um, over children and temperatures being taken? What happens if someone arrives at the school with a temperature? Um, um, what you're planning on doing if someone does appear to have a temperature? And is that gonna be the major gauge of whether the student is allowed to attend school that day?
Yeah, and also to piggyback off on Lynette, if you guys could kind of, for the families that are on the call, kind of give like an overview, just how you foresee things going? Like what are gonna be kind of the process? Is it gonna be the parents taking temperature checks? Are you doing it at the school? Um, you know, if you could maybe talk a little bit about like the overall procedures and then, you know, when they're in the building as well, that may be helpful.
So the, the general plan is that, um, families will have questions that they should review, a health check that they will do at home with their child. And that'll be on a piece of paper that they give to their child to bring with them to the bus. They'll get on the bus and sit in their seat. We're having, we're going to seat them like we always did, which was what's been suggested, which the older students in the back, the younger ones in the front, will leave the first couple of seats open if necessary. But they'll come to school and then when they come in the door, they'll hand in those que- that questionnaire and their temperatures will be checked. Adults or parents, we're only going to allow parents of pre-K and kindergarten students or stu- students with anxiety issues into the building. And those parents will have to sign the same questions and, um, have their temperature checked as well. And that's why we're staggering the arrival so that we can accommodate those folks at three different entrances at different times to keep everyone separated as best we can. Sarah, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, sure. So we, um, you know, I just wanna, a big shout out to all, to everybody for being so patient. Um, you know, we've had to ask teachers to move out of their cla- move a lot of things out of their classrooms, which has been kind of emotional. Lots of trucks coming and they're putting stuff in basements, putting stuff upstairs. And we hope to get all those items back in our classrooms just as soon as we can. Um, so Beth Coghlan had a classroom, um, adjacent to the nurse's office, fortunately. Um, unfortunately for her, she got moved a couple of times, so thank you, Beth. Um, so that is our, um, I don't wanna say, what is that official name of that room now?
Isolation room.
Isolation. I wanted to say segregation, but it's isolation. Thank you. So if we have a student that, um, is not feeling well or doesn't have a good temperature, what we'll do is we'll walk them around outside of the building so they're not going all the way through the school. And we'll put them in that isolation room and follow certain procedures with our school nurse.
Okay.
And what about for the people? Yeah, what about the, um, the, so that's for the bus. What about the people arriving by drop-off? Is it temperature checked by the parent prior to them arriving to school? Or is there gonna be several different people inside the school building that are gonna be assigned to temperature checks?
We'll have three locations where temperature checks will be taken. So all students, whether they come by car or by bus, will be temperature checked before they enter the building. Parents do not have to do the temperature checks. They just have to do the questionnaire.
Board members, any questions for the principals? Um, specifics? I have one, um, Chris, Chris had mentioned that, um, if there's a snow day or something happens, um, and like in March, when we were given three days to close down, um, are the kids all bringing their Chromebooks home with them daily in case something should happen? Or how are we handling that?
At this point, we're going to have students leave their chargers at home and bring their Chromebooks home every night because we never know when that's, could happen. We want them to be prepared and we'd like them to charge them at home. Um, we have also purchased cases for all of them to protect the Chromebook so that they can bring them home every night.
Okay.
I had a couple more questions. Oh, go ahead, please. Um, so I have, I have like three questions for Debbie and Sarah, and then I have two for Chris. So I think to help, someone may have to mute their phone. I don't know. There's a little bit of static. I don't know if it's just on my end or...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute. Okay, they muted. Thank you. 'Cause I, I have the ability. I also wanna mute a board member by accident.
Yeah, no worries. So I think it could maybe help for the parents that are on the call just to kind of, you know, in their minds, kind of picture. I know this is like very stressful that we are like entering a, a new and very different era of schooling. Is there gonna be, maybe if you guys could kind of describe a little bit more so that they can visualize kind of what things are gonna look like? I know the desks are gonna be, you know, set, uh, six feet apart to the best of the ability. Like, are there gonna have to be like plastic barriers up? Are the kids gonna be, you know, somewhat moving to electives throughout the day? Um, you know, in regards to like the masks, I assume they're on all day with the exception, I, I, if they need to take a drink and, and eat. Maybe if you can get into a little bit more, um, that may help the families on the line.
Do you want me to take that, Sarah?
Sure, I can chime in or find a mute.
Okay. All right. Um, the, we're, we've set the classrooms up based on Dr. Ciccarelli's advice with a three-foot bubble around the desks. Students will wear their masks throughout the day and take them off, at least at this point, take them off, as you say, to eat and to drink. They will not have to wear them at recess. And we will figure out a way that they, a place that they can put their masks and keep them safe while they're outside and then get them before they come back in. They'll sanitize their hands before they go out to recess and before they come back. Um, they'll be cleaning their desks before lunch and before they leave at the end of the day. Um, we are encouraging teachers to take a picture of their classroom once they get it set up and send that home with their back-to-school letter so students can see what their rooms look like. Give them a little bit of a, you know, a preview and, and take away some of that concern about what that's going to be like. We don't really anticipate having too many of, of big Plexiglas barriers. We're trying to get as many individual desks as we can for students. There will be some Plexiglas in some rooms where we couldn't do that or some other kind of a barrier that we're working on engineering our own thanks to our new, uh, director of maintenance. Um, did I miss anything, Sarah? I mean...
So for...
And the electives.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Too. Yeah, they, though it's gonna be pretty much business as usual.
Students will be going to electives, but some classrooms, due to their size, elective teachers will need to come to their classroom. So, um, just depending on how big their class size is, if they can accommodate those, um, specials classes. Um, we're fortunate that we will be able to use our gym because I know a lot of other schools, they've had to use that for storage. Um, we've used, a lot of the stage area is packed full of stuff in our upstairs, but we will be able to use that. Um, students will be able to go outside, but they won't be able to, um, to mingle with other classes, unfortunately, um, at this time. But again, all of this could change. We're just going under the current guidance and recommendation that we currently have.
Now, Sarah, you said that they'll be, you said they'll be going outside. Is that the pre-K through eighth?
I, I couldn't understand what you said. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm just saying you said they could go, that we have recess for the students. Does that include all of them up to eighth grade? Do they get it, to get up and stretch a little?
Yes. Yes.
Um, middle school students will be changing classes and we will be using some of those outside doors to move around a little bit. So they will move from class to class to get them a little bit more, um, activity throughout the day, um, wearing their masks and, as I said, using those outside exits as well. Um, they won't be using their lockers at first. They'll be carrying their things in their backpacks. But that's just until things change. I just, it's a great way to start to just see how things work.
Great, thank you, Debbie and Sarah.
If I could ask, Chris, Chris had mentioned it, um, now I forgot. Go ahead, I forgot what it was.
Yeah, I have two questions for Chris and Lisa on that end. Um, and then I don't know, other board members may have some questions. Chris, there was something that you said that I just kind of wanted you to maybe clarify. So two questions I have. First, roughly, how long do you think the four-day week model is gonna occur? I don't know if you're thinking one month, two months? If it's kind of under the guidance of, you know, how things are going with the governor's office? And then the other thing is, uh, you said that if they shut down, if we have to shut down due to staffing. So could you maybe elaborate a little bit on that? Like, I, I mean, does the school pretty much plan to be open? You know, unless there's, you know, a COVID case or, you know, maybe potentially more of an outbreak in Rutland County? Um, you know, what would be some of the reasons for, for, for closing the school? You had mentioned staffing. So I, if you could maybe touch on those two areas?
Sure. Uh, I'll talk about the, um, the, the four-day plan in terms of, and this is something that I do believe a few former's, I think, asked about when I, uh, the GRCSU. So this, uh, there is not a definite timeline on when we move from a four-day to a five-day. I, ideally, if, uh, the state moves us into step three, and I know that as I sat in the call last week with the superintendents around the state, uh, that it was reiterated to us that currently, um, we could really open up our schools under step three, but they felt it was better to open up in a step two to be a little more cautious. And with that being said, it's, in, in our current situation that, you know, the, the conditions are, are good within our local communities, uh, you know, you know, uh, you know. And so therefore, we could open up, like I said, in, in the four-day model works out well for us. The reason why we chose to, to go back to the four-day model was to allow us some more time to prep or plan. And our goal is within, I'd say, a couple of weeks, you know, two or three weeks, I think we would then reassess, uh, how things are going. We would take a look at, uh, you know, you know, building admins. I'd speak with the, the teachers, uh, the students. I think we'd, you know, reach out to the community. And then if we felt that at that time we were, uh, in a good place to move to a five-day model, then we would shift to a five-day model. Uh, there's no reason, there's no reason for us to rush through it, but there's also no reason for us to stay in a model if we can safely move to a five-day model. Uh, so that, that really will be more, like I said, of, of local patrol. If they, you know, the state does move us to step three, which I do believe they want to do as quickly as possible, uh, particularly since sports are kind of tied around that right now. So I, I do believe they're not, they, they don't want to kind of keep us in step two for, you know, for too long. Um, but once they, they move us in a step three, I think we can also assess at that particular time as to what we, well, but that'll be the decision that it won't be, just be my decision. It'll be a decision where we really, like I said, we'll have all parties involved on how comfortable we feel move to that five-day model. And like I said before, the, 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 the remote learning day was done with this whole intention of just making sure that we are, from a procedural and operational standpoint, are, are doing everything we can to make sure our students and our staff are, uh, entering a safe and healthy and clean school. Uh, with regards to closures, uh, it's gonna be an interesting year. And when I say staffing, you know, there are, it's something we're working through right now, a variety of leave requests. Uh, and I think with, during a normal year, uh, you know, being a small school with a limited subpool, uh, it's a very delicate balance that we have. And I think last year, particularly in the month of, you know, November, December, a lot of schools, the flu hit, we found ourselves, our resources were stretched very thin. And I know just over at the Proctor High School, uh, we had, you know, it was an all-hands-on-deck for a couple, couple of days where we had custodians were filling in. I was, you know, taking two or three classes, uh, some arriving assistance. So everyone was, was pitching in. During this, this time, we can't do that. And I say that because of the fact that it just kind of flies in the face of keeping a safe and healthy school. And so what we have to really look at is establishing what a threshold, uh, threshold for each school individually. Uh, let's say, rural in town, if we establish at the threshold to say six teachers, that if we hit this sixth teacher, we realize that we cannot safely operate, uh, you know, or operate the school without putting both students and staff, uh, in, in harm's way. And I think it's a decision we have to be very careful, uh, making. But, uh, like I said, we, we know that it's a, that people have part of this local patrol 'cause cause some issues where, uh, there are some districts right now who are fully remote, uh, which causes childcare concerns. uh, which causes childcare concerns. There are others who are on an alternating day, which causes childcare concerns for, for, you know, for a student or staff members, I'm sorry. And so, uh, there are some days which they, they may have to take off, or they might take off to, you know, take care of a sick child, or they might be sick themselves. Uh, just with a non-COVID related illness. And I feel bad because every cough, every sneeze, every runny nose will be, uh, will be highly scrutinized, uh, but we are going to have individuals and staff members who are sick. And I think we just have to understand that there might be some days in which we may not be able to safely open up the school because we just don't have the appropriate personnel to do that. Uh, so, so that's something for us to, you know, to continue to take a look at and explore. And, and this is something where for the past, I'd say, five weeks, every superintendent's associated, I mean, I've, I've attended, this is a statewide concern just because they understand how delicate uh, and fragile a school really is. Uh, and, and this is really stretching our resources. When we look at other situations where building might have to close, obviously we look at, you know, snow day, but we look at a, a building may have to close, but the learning doesn't necessarily have to. And that's, so that goes back to the flexibility of this model where, you know, if, uh, if we do have a normal snow day, well, you know, I, I know that the kids might not like to hear this, that's, you know, the snow days will be changed for them. I told my daughter, you know, snow days will no longer be, uh, be that, that she'll still have to learn. And she was pretty upset about that, but uh, she'll get over it. Um, I, I think it's, but, you know, we have to look at, but also we have to consider on a day if it's really bad snowstorm, power gets knocked out. We also have to build in a couple of days for emergency planning where we may have to just shut down learning for a day because students don't have access to resources, uh, building. So it is a, as I said before, it's going to be a kind of a, a, I would say chaotic year. Because I think our teachers, and I say our teachers because they're, they're on the front lines, are going to do a nice job of uh, working with our, with our parents, with our students and, and making this the best thing possible for our kids. Yeah, but, uh, it, it will be very disruptive in terms of, you know, moving in and out of models, you know, depending on the state. The state will determine when we go to step two, step three, back to step one. That will not be up to, uh, myself or, you know, the local Department of Health. Uh, the state will make that determination. If the state for one reason or another says we're going to step one, full or remote, there's nothing we can do about that, you know, can't go to full or remote. Uh, but also along those lines, uh, you know, I, I spoke with the, the, had a good conversation with our union reps today and, you know, Lisa, and I've talked with, uh, other board members about this. Well, I, I do believe with, even within the SU, we have to have some flexibility that if, uh, if a school would have to shut down for one reason or another, let's say that if, uh, you know, Polton Elementary or Proctor Elementary has to shut down for one reason or another, that doesn't mean that Rutland Town School has to shut down. So we're not going to be looking to make SU-wide decisions with the exception of, say, a, you know, weather-related uh, situation. But if there's a reason why a building has to shut down with a boiler, or because on that day they just have, uh, too many people out, out sick, and they can't, uh, safely staff the building, then we can move that in, you know, one building to a remote learning while, uh, the other schools can still ma, you know, maintain, uh, their normal schedule.
Chris, if I could ask, um, as far as you said Wednesday, um, that is a half-day remote, is it not, or is it full day?
The students will be half-day, yes, on that day, correct?
Colleen, did you have any other questions?
Last question, and then we can turn it over to other board members. Chris, just so I make sure we, I clarify. Um, are you able to bring in subs or is that no longer going to be allowed COVID?
Yes, we're allowed to bring in subs. So we're, you know, working with Kelly's. I think one of the concerns we have is just that on a normal year, uh, subs can be very difficult. And I think as we're, we're going to see schools may have a high, high number of absences or, 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 you know, leaves, uh, so that the sub pool will be depleted. And so, uh, like I said, I, I spoke, had a good conversation with their unions more about, about that, some of those concerns, but subs will be available. I know that, uh, some buildings have student teachers and student teachers will be, still be allowed to be placed as well.
Okay, great. Um, Matt, do you have any questions?
I have none. Thank you guys very much. It sounds like everything's been well thought out. I know everyone's been there working and I really appreciate it. And, uh, Chris, thank you for all the information. The, uh, Chris has been thrust into a lot. He started in July 1st uh, on this job, and it's been an extreme challenge that he's had to face. So, anyway, uh, big thank you to Chris and also to Sarah and Debbie and everybody else out there. You guys have worked really hard on this and, uh, stayed with it all summer. So, thank you guys.
And of course the teachers too with their classrooms. Um, yeah. Tim?
Uh, nothing, nothing at the moment.
Awesome. How about you, Russ?
No, I'm all set. Thank you for asking though.
Okay. Um, Chris, Debbie or Sarah, do you have anything else?
I did. Lynette, I just wanted to add that I am, um, working with a couple, um, couple people in regards to providing childcare for those Wednesdays. So some things should be released, um, soon for families within GRCSU that's looking for childcare and somebody to help their, their, um, child or children with that remote learning if they're working those Wednesdays. So that is in the works.
Oh, awesome. Good news. Good news. Okay, so I am going to go and, yep, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I had one more thing. So I, I know that, uh, there will be a question about the, uh, if there were, were to be a, let's say, a, a child or a, a teacher or a staff member diagnosed with COVID. Uh, the decision to close would not rest solely with myself or the building ministry, as we would be in consultation with the, the Department of Health and the Department of Health would guide us as to whether or not we needed to close. So I just wanted to put that in there. Hopefully, you know, like I said, we will never have to encounter that. But I just want to make the, you know, that is something which we have to go, the Department of Health and they will basically follow their guidance and follow their protocol with regards to whether or not the building is safe to remain open or whether or not we should, uh, close for a determined amount of time. I just want to put that out there.
Great. Great, thank you. Um, Deb, I think you said you had the building. Um, you had mentioned that we can use the gymnasium for classes. What about the library? Um, I don't believe class, classes are going to go in there. Do, are any of our classes, is that going to be turned into a classroom or any plans on that?
Right now, it's not being turned into a classroom. Um, the librarian is going to go to the classrooms at least for the first couple of weeks. And then we'll see how things go. And then we might move that library, those classes back into the library again. So we're going to leave that open for now.
Oh, good. Good. Okay, I'm coming to the, uh, teacher staff comment. Um, again, you don't have to give your name. Any teacher or staff comments? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move to the community. And again, we have a large group of community members. So if you have a question, if you would just state your first name and then the question. And again, please leave out any reference to any children or instructors. Just a general question and answer period. Um, and unfortunately, I don't have a way to do this systematically. So, um, I'll open it up for questions.
Um, I have a question. Um, so I was wondering a couple of building-related kind of questions and flow of student kind of questions. Um, my first one was when temperature screenings take place, are the typical kind of COVID kind of questions going to be asked as well of the families? Like, have you traveled outside of Rutland County? Those sorts of questions that we've all been asked.
Those, those, those questions will be provided to you in, in advance. So you have them, um, and you could fill them out in paper form and give them to your child so they can bring it in already answered by the parent. If the child doesn't have it, we'll try and ask the child, but you know, some children, that's really hard to ask those questions. So we'd appreciate it if parents would do that in advance and we'll get those out to you as soon as we have those completed.
Thank you. My next question is that you mentioned that students would be, um, helping to clean desks. And I would like to know how that would work and what um, disinfectants they're going to be using. And I, I feel like I don't necessarily agree with students K through, I don't remember your age level, but it should not be up to the students. I feel like custodian staff should be going in multiple times a day and cleaning. So I just want to know what your plan is as of now.
Well, there's a difference between cleaning and disinfecting. So the custodians are going to be doing the disinfecting of the rooms. That's that's ob- obviously true. The, um, students will just clean their own space, the one that they worked on. So they'll have a wipe. The teacher will, if they need to spray, the teacher will do that and the student will wipe it. And there's, these are all approved, um, uh, solutions that we're using. And we have, we can, we can give you the access to information about the, um, MSDS sheets on those uh, materials that we're using, if you like. Sarah?
Okay.
So Jen, this is Sarah. Hi. So I think just a similar way, like in the cafeteria, for example, even with our little kids, we have them take pride in their space. And we'll say, okay, let's clean your table. Whoever's table, you know, is clean and quiet, you get dismissed first. So, you know, when appropriate. And I think some of our middle school kids, if, you know, if they're changing classes just to end one a minute early and say, please get a wipe and wipe your space and, um, you know, we'll get you to your next class. That's what we're envisioning.
Okay, I would certainly be interested in knowing what kind of, um, solution you're using and, uh, in my opinion, the stronger the better. Um, so I'd be interested in more information about that. I'm also wondering if you are doing and considering as much outside time as possible in the first couple of weeks to minimize exposure?
We have and will continue to encourage our, um, teachers to bring their kids out as much as possible. We don't have a lot of, um, sitting space for our kids. You know, that's one thing. We have a couple of areas, but it's Vermont and I've, you know, joked with our teachers and like, watch it rain every single day in September because it's never rained, hasn't rained all summer. So, um, you know, that, that is a concern of, you know, the days when it's, you know, it's weather dependent if, if we can take our kids out. So we will continue to encourage teachers as much as possible to take their students outside. But again, we don't have ample, um, chairs and, and things for kids to do work on outside.
Thank you. I, I, I understand that. Uh, my next question in regards to that would be shade. Um, we typically in my family wear a hundred SPF and, um, would there be tents provided?
We don't have tents, uh, available at this time. So continue with the SPF.
Thank you. I'm, I'm all set for now.
Okay.
Okay, the next question? Again, if you want to unmute at star six, and does anybody else have any questions for the administrators?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Leslie and I'm calling about, uh, the specials. I wondered if we do a remote option, will they be participating in any way in the specials or just expected to do something on their own?
I can take that one. Um, yes, the, the remote, the remote menu includes specials classes just like in a normal school day. So if Tuesday is a remote day and Tuesday you have art for the day, um, then during your art class, your art teacher would be providing, um, some instruction, uh, like a mini lesson and an activity for the day.
Wonderful. Thank you. I had a second question if there's anybody available. Are there computers available for all the kids or is there a special, you know, um, you have to meet some requirement for that?
No, very proudly I can say, I think we have a computer for everybody. Um, Sarah, yep?
Yes, you are correct.
And we'll be setting up a, and we'll be setting up a time for the students who are going to be working remotely for their parents to pick up their Chromebooks before school begins. So we'll work something out and, uh, get that information to parents as soon as we have it. We'll contact them individually.
Awesome. And if I also, if I could ask a quick question about in here. Um, one of the downfalls that was perceived at least from this spring remote learning is the ability to leave a question for a teacher or ask questions of a teacher. Um, is that going to be simpler or not?
Lynette, are you talking about parents asking teachers questions or students asking teachers questions?
Both.
Both. So again, at the, the lower grade levels, um, Google, again, Google Classroom is the primary vehicle. So all the information will come that way. Um, but parents can email teachers anytime, just like a normal school year. Um, and the teacher will either set up a time to call or will reply to that email when they have a planning period or, um, during a time that they choose to read emails and respond to them. Um, if kids have questions, they'll have those scheduled times throughout the day when they have access to their teachers. Um, and so they'll know what time they're, they need to be live and they can ask their teachers for anything that they need during that time. Um, through the same kind of like, you know, raise your hand and get help that you would in a normal classroom.
Also, for your information too, I know teachers are working on part of their morning meetings and the beginning of the school year, really instructing students on how to use those things so that they can mute and unmute themselves. I mean, they're really going to be teaching and leaning into that so that if we have to go fully remote, the students will be ready to. So that's something that they've been, uh, talking a lot about.
Great. Leslie, did you have any other questions?
I did. One last question and I appreciate the time. I would like to know if we do an in-person choice. If, if something should happen, um, do, do we have the option of going remote? I know it's difficult to go the other way and go from remote to in-person, but can we go from in-person to remote?
So you're asking if you start face-to-face and then you choose for, sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. It's echoing. And then are you asking if you can then choose to go to remote or if the school goes remote?
No, I'm asking if an individual child could go remote after a period of time. Let's say October hits and we're just not feeling comfortable or it's not going well for the child. Could we make that change?
Yes, we're working on a protocol that allows for parents to move, uh, within the, the different learning models. The one thing that we, we, we would discourage would be to, you know, to have like every other day decide, okay, today we're going to do, you know, in-person, uh, tomorrow we'll do remote. Uh, I, I, I think as, uh, you know, this, this changes from day to day. And we understand that, you know, people's comfort levels with things might change. Baseball, what's going on, the world around them and the community. And so therefore if a, if a family feels that the, you know, this, you know, they just don't feel safe with what's going on, they want to kind of, you know, move to more remote. Uh, I would encourage one, talking to Sarah and Debbie, uh, about that request and figuring that happen. And vice versa, if you feel more comfortable and want to move into an in-person, uh, also have that same conversation as well. But there, there will be flexibility for families, uh, to move with, within that, uh, within the models as we move throughout the course of the year.
That's great. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Um, anyone else have questions?
Um, it's, sorry, it's Jen Q again. Yes, I did have one more question. Um, Superintendent Sell talked a lot about what the remote learning plan would look like for the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. I was wondering if the Wednesday option would look the same, like a 15-minute mini lesson and then go off and do your own work? And then another 20-minute mini lesson here and there, like, would Wednesday look the same as that? I know there are the hours for that. But I just want to know what that Wednesday would look like a little bit more. Thank you.
Lisa, do you want to answer that or do you want me to answer it?
Sure, um, I can address that. I, I think we're, some of it we're still working through. Um, we're trying to be able to provide, um, uh, like at the older level, you might think of them like office hours. And at the younger level, you might think of them like intervention. Um, and trying to make sure, you know, during the normal course of a regular school week when all kids are in person, teachers would have these small pockets of time to be able to quickly pull a small group to reteach something that that group of students struggled with. Um, or to provide, you know, extra instruction using manipulatives or a different method with them, um, because the first lesson wasn't successful. And we're trying to make sure that that gets put into the schedule as well so that, um, for our students, especially students learning remotely, if they are struggling with something, they have access to the teacher. And, and we initially had this idea that, that Wednesday would be more like that and that students would be more independent, but might have these intervention times or be able to connect with their teachers differently. Looking at like the special schedule and other pieces, that thinking is sort of changing at this point in time. And we're looking at, you know, if you only have a class on Wednesday, how do we make sure that you still have access to the content and instruction for that class within the schedule? Um, we're also looking at making sure there's equity for our teachers. And so it's looking like that time may be a little, maybe come a little bit more structured. It may be more like a, a remote or normal, um, school daytime. But we have a task force that is um, meeting twice this week for a long marathon meetings. Um, and that's one of the things on our agenda to try to, um, get a little bit more. Um, and that's one of the things on our agenda to try to, um, get a little bit more clarity around, um, and make some of the decisions that we need to for that day.
Lisa, while you're on, um, could you address the special education and how you think that's going to work? Um, are, you know, are one-on-ones going to be in the classroom? Uh, what, how is that going to work? Because I know we kind of had struggled with that this spring.
Sure. So, um, my understanding from Christine and Kimberly, and of course they're always, um, the go-tos on, on these issues because they stay the most up-to-date with the special ed guidance. Um, but it, things should look, um, fairly normal for most students in terms of special education services. So if a student has a, an instructional assistant that works with them, um, around health or behavior, that individual would continue to do so, um, and would, um, you know, with precautions, be involved in the same amount of work, um, the same for special ed services. They'll be delivered, um, in a one-on-one or small group, um, setting based on the child's IEP, um, and what those services are supposed to look like for them. There may be additional precautions that need to be taken for PPE. Um, one example of that, uh, if you're a speech language pathologist and you're working with a student on how they speak, it's very important that the student be able to see your face and your mouth and how those muscles move. You, you can't deliver that service without that functionality. And so in that case, you may have speech language in a room that does have a Plexiglas divider, um, where there's, uh, students and staff members may both be asked to wear face shields for that particular service. Um, and I know that the special ed, um, folks are waiting on some very specific regulations from the agency and the Department of Health around provision of those services. So there could be some things that are slightly different due to the nature of the service itself that really need to be customized with additional, um, personal protective equipment or additional physical distancing to make sure that it's safe for both the student and the staff member. But they should still receive those services, um, as they would in a normal school year.
Jen, did you have anything else? Um, or did that answer your question?
No, um, thank you very much, um, for answering my specific questions. And thank you to the teachers and the staff a hundred thousand times for all this hard work in this impossible situation. I appreciate every last one of you. Thank you.
It truly is a scary time. Um, if either Sarah or Deb want to mention or, um, explain how lunches are going to be held because I know classrooms aren't going to have refrigerators, they're not going to have microwaves if someone brings something in, how are lunches going to be handled?
So lunches are going to be delivered to, um, classrooms. So breakfast right now will be more of a grab and go when students arrive if they signed up for it. And then school lunches will be delivered to classrooms.
Okay, great. Um, anyone else have a question out there in the community?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
This is Tina Keshava. I, um, I was surprised to hear that everyone would be bringing in a paper every day to certify, you know, that they answered these questions. I feel like as a general rule, we're trying to do, um, like paperless or contactless ways of communicating. So I was wondering if there was more of a digital, um, way of verifying that in the morning, whether it's by a text or an email or something like that instead of a paper that has to be passed from one person to another?
Tina, I'll, I'll answer that. I know that, um, that is something which we're discussing, we're looking at. We're trying to reduce the amount of paper just because we, just the sheer volume of, you know, think for four days, just the stack of papers that we'd have to find a place to store. And so we are looking at a more efficient way to, uh, have parents, you know, kind of, you know, self-certify. And let, let, you know, Sarah, Debbie in the, in the building know that, uh, you know, they, they attest that their students or their children are healthy to attend school. I know that the state has also been talking for the past couple of weeks about an app. Uh, but we keep hearing about that. So, um, knowing the state, the app will probably be released February or March. Um, and just in time for, uh, school year then. So, uh, but I think we have to look at just how we, uh, how we can handle that. But there, there are a lot of different ways and it's something which, um, I know Lisa and I have discussed. We're going to talk with the admin team about doing not just a Rutland Town but across the SU just to help, you know, eliminate the amount of paper that we have going back and forth as well.
Thank you. Tina, you all set or you have another question?
Um, I, I, I guess, I have a question.
I just have another comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I, I was just curious if it was, um, I know that sometimes the personal teachers do GoFundMes for their classrooms or things like that. Um, I was wondering if there was money in the budget for, you know, personal seats or, you know, making like sit-ups or things like that for the kids for when they go outside so that more of the space could be used for classroom space?
So Tina, I've been looking at some of those myself, kind of like the home stadium chairs that you can have, like almost a kid's put on of a backpack. Um, so I looked at those with some teachers. We do not have that in our budget unfortunately.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Stacy Oxley. I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead Stacy.
I would, can you guys talk to about the difference between the Rutland Town, um, virtual learning and homeschooling? Cause I'm hearing a lot of families that are pulling their kids from the Rutland Town curriculum and buying a homeschooling program. And I kind of wanted to know the differences and your thoughts between why people are choosing to go for a homeschool curriculum and not do the virtual learning?
Chris or Lisa, you want to handle that one?
Uh, I'm really not familiar with the program they're talking about in terms of homeschooling, so I, I can't sort of speak about that. I, I guess, you know, um, so, you know, I could look into it and it could get back to you with an answer if you'd like. But I, I don't want to comment on a program which I'm really not familiar with, uh, with regards to homeschooling specifically.
I can talk a little about, a little bit about the difference between the two. So, because I think the terms get used interchangeably sometimes by families and there's some confusion about what one is versus the other. So, remote learning means that the school is providing the curriculum, the assessments, the instruction, that, that we are providing the education for your child and your family is choosing to access that in a remote fashion because of COVID-19 at this time. Um, homeschooling is when the parent assumes responsibility for all of those things. So what is your child going to learn? How are you going to measure that they've learned? And there's a homeschooling division at the Agency of Education. You have to apply for homeschooling. You have to fill out your plan, um, and explain to the state how you plan to deliver all of that instruction. Um, the, I, I don't have as much contact directly with families now in, in my role as Assistant Superintendent as I did when I was a principal. But, um, I still do see families out in the community and have had lots and lots of conversations with people. And, um, the decision points that I've heard for families in that situation, um, primarily it's around childcare. Um, so for example, if, uh, they need to have their, if they choose to educate their child remotely and they need to have their child with, um, grandma or grandpa who might not be very tech savvy, um, they're concerned that their child won't be able to access the resources and instruction from the school in a timely fashion during the day. So homeschooling allows them the schedule flexibility, um, to be able to educate their children when they're not working. Um, and, uh, for younger students, um, some of the, especially, you know, like the pre-K kindergarten level, um, some families are a little bit more concerned about having to have the students available for the full length of the school day. If you have, you know, your literacy lesson at nine and you have your math lesson at 11 and then you don't have your, um, your, um, art or music class until 2:15, um, it can limit your family's ability to do other things with your day. Um, and so families are, are looking at that for those younger students and saying, hmm, I think I can provide a robust, um, experience for my, my preschooler or kindergartner, um, in that area. But every family has, you know, challenging decisions to make. We know that these are not easy for them. Um, and different situations. So they're, they are all fairly unique, um, in that regard. Um, we encourage people to contact your, your principal and talk to them about that decision because your principal knows your individual child and your individual situation. Um, and they can really, um, you know, kind of help you think about, you know, what the school has to offer, um, or what your family would need to do. Um, if you wanted to replicate that experience outside of the public school program. Right now, the number of requests, formal requests for homeschool are, um, very low across the district. Um, most, most families who are choosing not to come in person are choosing remote. Um, but we do know we have a few families who are looking at that option. Um, and we hope to, uh, to be able to support them, um, and stay connected with them so that when their child is ready to return to the public school system, hopefully this will all be, um, a thing of the past and we'll be able to, uh, continue our relationship and our work together in the future.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. I appreciate it.
Hey Lisa, this is Matt Branchop. Can you hear me? The, uh, Lisa, I had a question for you. Um, I heard through the homeschooling, uh, traditionally the school will provide support services to families that are homeschooling, meaning that students can come into the district, use different programs. Um, it's somewhat limited for math or English, but they could obviously come in for art or they could come in for gym or music, for example. I've heard that something came down from the governor that that was not going to be an option that was allowed this year. Uh, I don't know if it was from the Secretary of Education or the governor, but someone mentioned to that, or mentioned that to me in passing the other day that the homeschoolers were not going to be able to use the school services because they didn't want extra people accessing the school. Do you know anything about that? Uh, either Chris or Lisa?
I haven't seen any specific guidance about that. Chris, have you seen anything yet regarding homeschooling?
No, I haven't Matt, but I can reach out to, uh, some people tomorrow and I'll get back to you and let you know what I hear, okay?
Great, thank you guys very much.
All right, thanks.
Lynette, I can share with you that we have, um, I've had three families reach out to me that they are going to homeschool this year for a couple of reasons.
Okay, so we do have, uh, three families, okay.
Well, two families, one of which their siblings.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Um, community, any more questions?
Um, this is Jen Q again. I had one more question, I'm sorry. Um, as I'm taking all this in, it's just, um, I have, you know, many questions, but I'm concerned about the bus and, um, children taking the bus to school and relying on the families to report the temperature and then exposing, potentially exposing all of the other kids on the bus to maybe somebody who has a high temperature or a, uh, report that's not accurate. Have we, have you researched, um, taking temperature at first point of contact when the students get on the bus?
That's a good question. Um, Sarah or Deb?
I think I'm going to let Chris take this one because we just got new guidance last Friday on this.
Well, cur- currently the guidance still is at that safe perimeter, uh, which is, means that whenever a student enters the bus, they come to the school, that's all their temperature is checked. Um, we've heard some discussion about there, there might be a change in that guidance, but we're not for certain what that will be as of yet. But as of right now, uh, when a student gets on a school bus, they will have their temperatures checked and as well as have the, uh, self-certification form. Um, and so, uh, the, the logistics are in terms of what happens if a student does present with a temperature at the bus stop, what, what do we do? And I think we've, uh, the superintendents have asked for some counsel, some advice on that, and we're waiting to hear back on this. So once we have information, uh, with regards to logistics and how better to handle those sorts of things, it's fine. Cause I, I, I think that your concerns are the same concerns that we, we have as well as terms of the last thing we want to have is a, uh, when we have students in the building or staff in the building that we are unsure, to the best of our knowledge, that everyone is in a, a, a good health. Um, that no one is, that we're not unwittingly bringing someone in to the building that might compromise the safety or the health of anybody in the building. So we're, we really have to look at doing our due diligence with creating that safe perimeter. So, um, and like I said, the concern is, uh, it's across the state. We're waiting for further guidance on how best to handle that. And once we have that, we will let you know. So that's, I guess, one of the good things about pushing back the start date to a certain rate. Gives us a little more time to receive some guidance and make some plans for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay Jen, um, anyone else have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Go right ahead.
Sorry, I have a quick question. It's Julie McKenna. I think you guys said this towards the beginning, um, of this conversation, but did you guys say that you had numbers of how many parents are currently choosing the remote option? And how many parents are choosing the homeschool option as of right now?
I believe, uh, yeah, go ahead Sarah.
Yep, so right now we have 34 students that are signed up, actually 35, because I just got an email. 35 students that are choosing the remote and we have two families or three students total that I'm aware of that are homeschooled. Will be homeschooled.
Are we, um, are you guys gonna, obviously I think the 17th was the date that you gave people to kind of make a decision. I'm assuming you guys will give us an update after that. And then I don't know if you guys can share, um, once the new classes are kind of decided so, or known, that it's like, okay, if my child's going back to school, they're going back with, you know, 11 out of the, the 16 kids in their class? And maybe who that would still be, that they'd still be going to school with?
I'm not sure if we can divulge choosing to stay home because, um, that's a very personal question. I know a lot of people are very sensitive.
I can't share that. I won't be able to share that, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, that, that's fine. I just wasn't sure if that was something that could be shared or at least maybe the number that it's like normally say your kids, you would know that they have 16 kids in their class and only six are coming back to school. Or to kind of get an estimate on how many kids would be in their actual class that, um, during the school day.
Gotcha. Sure, I can ask the teachers to do that once we have a final list.
Okay, does that answer your question Julie?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, and I, I think part of it is just to make sure that our kids are going back with at least a friend that they're going to be in a pod with for the remainder of the year or however many months.
Right, for, for probably a month or two anyways. And then, I mean, nobody you don't know. And then like I said, there's a lot of people that are, or some people that are remotely learning because of personal reasons. Um, and it may change when they see that everything's going fine. Uh, we don't have crowded classrooms and crowded, crowded hallways, um, you know, and there's concerns about their chi- child wearing masks. I can't recommend enough that you try to get your child used to wearing a mask before they show up the first day. Um, it's going to be tough. I know it's tough for me to wear one for a long period of time. Um, and I haven't worn one for eight hours, so, um, I have no idea. I think that's why, um, I kind of like the Wednesday off at first because then the kids can wear them two days, have a day off, wear it two days. Um, and then the weekend off. But, um, anything we can do to ease the children into it, make it more of a normal is going to assist. Um, anybody else in the community have questions?
Hi, do you have a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, this is Stephanie. Um, my first question is regarding, um, I know you had addressed snow days. Um, what if there is a day when the temperature and the humidity is very extreme at the beginning of the year? And wearing of masks might be an unsafe situation? Is that something that has been discussed?
Yes, uh, coming from the Midwest, uh, where you start school in early August, it's, we, I'm used to these traditional heat days. Uh, but I know that, you know, we, it's something which we have been discussing. I know I, I was speaking with Bill Olson about this the other day about, uh, developing a heat index type thing. So that if there are days in which the, um, the heat index reaches a certain point, whether or not we would consider moving to remote. So that is something which we are discussing, we're talking about, we're looking at the logistics of at this particular time. Uh, we will let you know, uh, with that. I mean, like I said, by pushing the start date back into later September helps us out a little bit. But, uh, we still know that there, you know, we, we could still get a, a nice stretch of warm weather. Um, and I think with both, not just the students but even the staff as well, uh, it's, it can be very uncomfortable, very oppressive and, uh, and so when the heat index is at a certain point for everyone, it's just, it's not conducive to learning for everyone. So that is something we are considering and we'll let you know about that. So yes.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. And the second choice and, uh, second question, I'm not sure if it was covered in one of the documents, so I apologize if it was. Is the nurse's office in the same location or has that changed?
The nurse's office is in the same location and then we, um, The nurse's office is in the same location, and then we were able to move one of our special ed peers to a different location. So that's the isolation room, which is adjacent to the nurse's office. So there's an outside door there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That covers everything you needed, Stephanie?
It does, for now.
I hear ya. Anyone else out there have a question?
Lynette?
I don't know. I don't know.
Who had a question?
Me. Andrew Hathaway McGory. I have a son with an autoimmune disease, so we're leaning towards doing remote. And I was just wondering when you would know what kind of schedules they need to log in for? Because I'm also working from home myself, and I have some flexibility in my schedule, but I'm just getting, is there any kind of idea of a schedule that we will get to get before first day school? So that I can swing my meetings around helping them?
Right. I think that's something more specific. Sarah, is that a, or Debbie, is that a one they should email you on, and you can talk to her? Because that's more of a...
Those, that will be forthcoming. Like I, Lisa Madison, our assistant superintendent, I mentioned she's working quite a bit with the task force that's putting out those guidelines and recommendations that then our teachers need to work on. So that will be forthcoming to those kids that are remote later. We do not have that right now.
Yeah, I, I can add to that as well. And so, you know, the, the classroom teacher, every, every grade level, of course, and every class has a different schedule because your specials are at a different time, you know, your lunch might be at a different time. And so I know the schools are working really hard to set their master schedules. And the teachers should be able to share those with families, once we get back to school and get the teachers back on site to do that kind of work. What, what may shift, though, is that you're, you know, most teachers, especially at the elementary level, have very consistent schedules. Where, as, as you all know, kids benefit from routine, they thrive on it, and structure as well. And so the teachers will be able to give you a pretty good guideline of when they expect kids to sign on for mini lessons. But there will be some variability, of course, throughout the week. So, you know, especially if your specials might be at a different time on Tuesday and Thursday than they are on Monday and Wednesday, then that could change what time, you know, social studies happens. Or if you, the days that you have a sixth special, your schedule would be different for that day. Again, it'll be pretty routine from week to week. But there could also be some variability if you have a, a special presentation or activity. And in that case, you would know at the beginning of the week. So the teacher would be able to send out a menu at the beginning of the week to let people know about their, their individual schedules. I will say that the, there's been a lot of conversation about, is this going to look like the spring? And I, I just want to be very clear that, that it is not. In the spring, we had an emergency closure, an emergency remote learning. The Agency of Education has raised the bar significantly for the upcoming school year. So we have been reminded of the regulatory minimum hours by the Secretary of Education, who expects us to meet them at the upper elementary level. That's five and a half hours of instruction per day. That does not mean, again, that your child will be staring at a screen, watching a teacher for five and a half hours. But that means that the expectation is that they're engaged with learning. So they're either logging on for a mini lesson, they're working on an assignment or activity that the teacher has, has given to them. They might be logging on to a software program for individualized instruction. They might be meeting with an interventionist or having a small reading group. So, but the, the expectation is, is much higher for what that day is going to look like for kids. So there should be multiple interactions throughout every day. It may not be, you know, again, at seventh and eighth grade level, because I know where Atlanta goes, goes up there. When you get into a fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, that middle school model, you know, the students are probably going to need to log on during most of their class periods for at least a portion of time following their master schedule. At the lower elementary grades, the expectation will be, you know, slightly different, developmentally appropriate is what we're, we're trying to aim for. And the length of the, the times they need to log on may be shorter. And there may be more wiggle breaks and flexibility and snack and things that fall into the normal school day schedule that they would be able to participate with at home. So I don't think you're going to have a schedule now that will tell you what your child's week will look like in a consistent fashion. But we are asking that the teachers always have the schedule out at the beginning of the week. And that, of course, at the elementary level, we know it will be very structured and routinized for kids, because it's, that's what's best for them.
Okay. Are you all set on your answer?
Yes, I guess.
Go ahead.
Lynette, could, this is Sarah. Could I just go back to Julie McKenna's question in regards to remote kids?
Sure, go ahead.
So Julie, I'm not going to be able to give you those numbers, but I did just look at them again, and I would just say there's a couple in each class. So it's not, I mean, if your, if your kid had, you know, half the kids attending remotely, we would obviously notify them. But it's just a couple in each class. So I don't think it's really appropriate for me to have teachers include that in a back-to-school letter, just know it's a couple in each grade.
Okay, no, that's actually very helpful. I think that maybe some parents would have that concern, that it's like, is my kid the only kid going back? Or, you know, is it just a handful? So I think knowing that, and obviously, I think if it, if it does change, yeah, that you guys would let us know that there was a dramatic kind of turn for whatever reason. But thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. If my kid walked in and half their class wasn't there, I would want to prep them on that, too. There's going to be enough change, so, yeah.
But, you know, thankfully, I know you have until the seventeenth to try to get back to you. And I know it's a difficult decision for each family to make. But right now, we're running about, what, ten percent remote? So I don't think any of the classes are going to be decimated of students. Are there any other questions out there?
Hey Lynn, if I could, real quick, this is Matt Branchod.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
So I just wanted to reach out to everybody in case some parents log off. There's, I heard a few comments about the outside, and what was being done out there. I'll discuss that later on when we get to old business. But currently, I'm at the school with the loggers, with an excavation company today. But one of the things that I've been doing, we have two outdoor spaces that are available for people to use. One is behind the baseball field. That was an outdoor classroom built by the Four Winds program about ten years ago. During the course of us cutting trees, I had an idea that we'd be outside a little more. So what we did was take some of the trees and, you know, every fifteen inches, make a cut in them. So we've made about eight chairs to add to the outdoor classroom behind the ball field. In addition to that, behind the playground, there's a, I call the teepee area. Someone made three benches up there. There's a teepee made by the students in the woods. We're moving on to that area next. So as we drop trees, instead of just getting rid of them or leaving them there on the ground, if they're useful enough, what we've been doing is cutting the trees up into twelve or fourteen inch sections and putting them up for chairs. We're going to add some more around the teepee area as well. But if there's some parents out there that are interested in the outdoor spaces, we're really cleaning up the school grounds out back. So certainly get in touch with me. I would really appreciate any help, whether it's behind the ball field and the outdoor classroom that was created by Four Winds, or behind the playground in the teepee area. And so we really transformed the space out there. We're working on that right now and will be for the next couple of weeks. But we've gotten rid of the foliage between, you know, the school grounds and the woods. And so we've really opened that up in there so that kids can actually take some cover in the shade. And we're starting to think about those things. So we got about three, four weeks. I have about five people up there working with me, cutting chainsaws, and a lot of different things happening. If there's parents that are interested in those outdoor spaces, please just reach out to me outside of the board meeting, shoot me an email, and we'd really appreciate any help we could get out there.
Thank you, Matt. And you guys are doing a wonderful job out there. It, it's a wonderful use of that new land. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks so much, Matt.
Yeah, thank you, guys. It's been fun. I'm enjoying it.
Getting fit, trimming fit. Okay, do we have any other questions?
I keep saying I have one more. This is Jen Pugh again. And if you choose remote learning for your child and your child's teacher is outside, how will the connectivity work in that situation?
Yeah, that's probably not going to be something that the teacher would choose to have your children learning remotely be part of. But they might give them the directions for an activity. For example, you know, we are going to all go outside for science today, and our job is to find leaves and observe them and see how they're similar or different. And then for tomorrow's science class, we're going to talk about them, so save your leaves. And they could give that same direction to students at home and in school. And students at home, if they have enough adult supervision to be able to go outside at that time, or could do so later in the day, they could still participate in the activity. It would just be a little bit different.
Thank you.
Do you have one more, Jen?
I have a question.
Maybe.
Go ahead.
Did this one you?
Hi, I am strongly considering a remote model for my children this year, mostly because we have a lot of risk in our family. We have a new baby coming.
That's great. And we do not have to, I know that's a personal decision, and I really, we don't need to know why. We know that parents are doing the best, but go ahead.
But the rest of the question has to do with the asynchronous sessions. Are they at all going to be recorded? Because due to some of the life-changing events that we're going to be going through in this next month, I can tell you that my son is not always going to be able to log on every single time, but is certainly willing to work hard, and we really want to be able to get all the work complete.
I think that's something that you could probably go directly either with one of the principals or your teacher when they get a little farther down the road. Because everybody's plan's a little bit different, but I'm sure they'd be able to work with you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I can take that, too, Lynette. We, we are going to work with our teachers on recording instruction. And I would say that with the caveat that that would be ideal, but it will not be all the time, and it, it may not always be consistent. So for example, a teacher doing a mini lesson where they're standing in front of the classroom, introducing a new foundations term, pointing to the chart. That's something that's really easy for them to record with just a few clicks of a button. I say easy, but my kindergarten teachers are rolling their eyes as they say that because they feel that taking their eyes off their kindergarten class for ten seconds to touch buttons can be problematic sometimes. So...
No, I understand that myself. I'm a first grade teacher.
Right, so I should say easier as an option. However, if you're doing something like morning meeting, you know, that's something that's not going to be recorded. Students might be sharing personal information. The structure and format of it is more interactive. A student watching a video of it would not get the same benefit or learning experience from it. And so that wouldn't be recorded similarly to like a guided reading group. If, you know, the students are reading, you know, a passage or a chapter of a book together and having a discussion about it, that, it wouldn't make sense to record that for a student to watch later, because it's not interactive. And at the elementary level, them watching other people have a conversation about a book is not going to help them learn anything. So I think we're going to make good, I was just going to say, too, if you're, the teacher says, okay, eleven fifteen, we're all going to log on, and, you know, we're going to have a math lesson today. And then at eleven-ten, someone has a, you know, a medical emergency and needs a Band-Aid, or has to have something happen, you could have a situation where that, that lesson doesn't occur the way that the teacher intended it to. And so we're going to have to just work with families. We're going to need their flexibility and understanding as we try and prevent, present things live and, and record it, that sometimes the best laid plans are, are not going to work. And we just know that it's, it's not going to be a full, recorded lessons are not going to be a full substitute for the experience that remote students would get in an interactive fashion.
That makes a lot of sense. I guess I'm just concerned about any potential consequences that he might experience if he's not able to log on to several lessons. Like, will, will we still have access to the assignment that would need to be completed for him to be successful?
Yes, absolutely. And as you know, I mean, new, new babies are always so exciting. And students go through so many things when they have a new baby in the household. Even if they're in person in school, their, their brains may not always be available for learning that moment. And, you know, I just can't stop thinking about the, the teaching faculty that we have and the hard work that we do. I mean, I'm sure that your children's teachers will work very hard with you and your family, especially right around the, the time of the birth, to be as accommodating as they can within reason for your family.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm, I'm going to, with, we've been on this for about, a little over an hour and a half. If there's any pressing questions, go ahead. Otherwise, we're going to move on with the agenda. Any other questions? I appreciate you all showing up, and if you could pass along the information that you gathered tonight. There's a lot of rumors out there that aren't true. I apologize for this being a virtual meeting tonight. I am up in Maine, so I couldn't run an in-person meeting. I fully expected the board would rather be in person than on the phone. So the only reason it's remote tonight is my fault, and you can blame me. But I'm in nowhere, Maine, and I can't be there. Is there any other questions? Again, I thank you all for joining. You're more than welcome to stay. And we'll move on to the personnel portion of the agenda. Visitation.
We have none at this time, Lynette.
Okay, how about contract recommendations?
We have a professional staff, Bailey Sanders, teacher horizontal move. And then we have three individuals for extracurricular.
Okay, let's take them, I guess, one at a time. Bailey is just a move on the... So do I have a motion for Bailey?
I'll make the motion. It's Corinne.
Okay, Corinne.
Tim will second.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions? Tom, it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. And the next recommendation?
We have three for the extracurricular. We have Corey Pollak for seventh, eighth grade boys, soccer coach. Marissa Kiefer for seventh, eighth girls, soccer coach, and Amanda Carmichael, seven, eight cross-country coach.
I make a motion to approve all three.
Okay.
I'll second that motion. I'll second that motion. It's Matt.
Okay, Matt, thank you. Any questions or discussion on the recommendations?
Hi, this is Sarah. I know I, I just want to make sure salaries are correct, because we go back and forth on coaches. But I just want to make sure they're correct.
Yeah, I'll have to leave that to you because I'm confused on what they are.
I think it was, right, I think we had agreed, was it five hundred for the regular kind of middle school sports that had the, kind of the larger commitment in terms of time? And I believe it was, if I'm not mistaken, two fifty for the club sports. Is that correct?
They look right to me.
Yeah, I mean, they look okay for me, too, but, okay. Do I have a motion to approve all three?
Yeah, I did, didn't I? Can I already approve it? And Matt seconded it.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't write it down. I apologize. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. Non-union pay increases?
I don't see any in the packets.
Yeah, I didn't either. I just wasn't sure why that was on there. Okay, any other, anything else you can think of, Chris?
No, I think we've covered everything for personnel.
Okay. Under the chair's report, there's nothing down, because most everything was under old business. Matt, do you want to talk about the property?
Just briefly, actually, two things. I'll start with Cheney Hill, just quickly. I heard back from somebody the other day that it looks like the buyers will be going forward. They've had success in getting the septic permit. One of the problems, if you're taking over a property in the state of Vermont, you're switching use of it. They look like they're trying to convert this to a two or three-bedroom home. It used to be a community center over at Cheney Hill. You have to prove to them that the septic system can meet the needs of a two or three-bedroom house. And it's really difficult... and it's really difficult to ascertain that. So that's what they've been doing for the last couple of months is working with Nicole Kissering, uh, the engineer, to figure out what's in the ground, what it can handle for a house. Uh, apparently they've gotten a green light there or they're satisfied enough to move forward. They then dealt with the well issue, um, and apparently they've worked through that sufficiently enough. They had an expert who is a hydrologist in water. We had a spring across the street. All sorts of things have gone on, but I've heard that they would like to move forward. The contract date is August 24th. Um, so my thought, I couldn't remember whether we, before, uh, I know we had approved Gary Cutford as the attorney to represent us, uh, for the closing. And so my thought was that the, uh, and I'll just make a motion that, uh, we appoint, uh, Lynn Galoppo to sign all documentation, uh, to affect this closing and get it done if it takes place on August 22nd or thereby, you know, in a close date to that. So. I'd make that motion, uh, to appoint Lynn to sign all documents on behalf of the school to transfer the property to Mr. Nelson.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, any discussion? It's almost like I want to cross my fingers here, but. It's been a long summer. Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Great, we'll keep our fingers crossed for that.
Yes, please. Okay, that passes unanimously.
Perfect. So the, uh, so the only other thing that we're working on is obviously out behind the school. Uh, it's been an interesting process since May. Been putting in at least 20 hours a week out back there. Uh, currently we are running, and I'm not exactly sure where we are on cost, but we're somewhere between about $7,000 and $8,000. Uh, the school has covered five of it. All cover the difference. The, what we're working on right now is, and we just finished up today. Uh, we were going to be out there with a tractor and shovels and it's been really difficult because we can't involve the community in this. We're dropping huge trees, uh, we're cutting with chainsaws. This is something that you can't involve the community for. Uh, so we basically finished today, which was nice. Uh, we got three quarters of it, I think, done. We had an excavator company in there. City of Rutland was in there for the water line that's apparently running underneath the soccer field that I didn't know about. Uh, but at least we didn't break it today. That was a good thing. Uh, we finished up with the trail going in back. Uh, a lot of the stuff has been cut out. We've now limbed the play, all the way from the playground, all the way to the back corner of the field, which has opened up the woods for the playground and the teepee area. Uh, we're cleaning that up. I just don't want to deal with the ticks at school, uh, weeds and whatnot. But anyway, the kids are going to be able to go into the woods before where the teachers couldn't see them and now it's wide open when people will go in there. So, uh, hopefully we'll get some help in the teepee area, um, and we'll get that project finished off in the next few weeks. Just a couple of names out there, uh, people that have helped us tremendously. We got Kyle Taylor, uh, from Taylor Tree. He and Dan Constantino were there working with me, uh, for a day. Uh, Tommy Grace just donated some time to us for the excavation company. I'm going to be covering some costs on that. But, uh, they came in today and created a new path from the back of the school, uh, out to the road that runs behind that. And, uh, so Tom and his worker have really helped us out tremendously. Uh, I've now hired a Castleton kid in there. His name is Gordon Brown. Uh, he has been working, you know, somewhere between five and 20 hours a week. And Gordon is a assistant football coach over at Castleton, a really great kid that we've had in there. And then, uh, a huge thank you to Augie Levens and also, um, uh, Darren Boils from Chittit. Uh, we have them in there working with us as well. Uh, Augie's been bringing his tractor up from down on McKinley Avenue and taking care of stuff. So we've had excavation companies in there, professional tree guys like Taylor Tree, uh, and then over to Augie who's coming up there and offering his help and bringing in the tractor. So we really started to come together and so it's been nice that now we focus in on a couple of areas, which is one, the outdoor classroom. I had Trips, uh, Chips brought over from Gagne Lumber. They dropped him in a couple of different places. We're looking at taking care of the outdoor classroom behind the ball field. I figured that might get some use this year. Uh, and then, uh, we're also working on creating some more seats up there around the teepee area. Any help from parents out there would be really appreciated. Uh, the one thing I just wanted to bring up to the board, uh, was two, twofold. One, um, we were not able to finish the ball field to the back of the field on the left side. In addition to that, um, Taylor Tree was still needed. We weren't able to get to the trees that are propping up from the generator in the parking lot. Uh, we pushed up till 4:30 today, uh, with Kyle's third day. Uh, and he's about 1,200 a day. So we're about 3,600 today for Kyle finishing up. And we finished up out on the power lines. We couldn't get back to the generator area. We have several dead trees hanging over the teacher's parking lot. Uh, we, I spoke to Kyle about those and we can try and drop those and push them back into the woods so we don't have to get rid of them. He also has a chipper that makes it really handy. Um, but anyway, it would be my thought that, you know, if the board will allow us $1,200 more to have Kyle back, otherwise the principals can also put it out for bid as well, uh, for the trees and at least the generator room. Uh, and then the last thing was, uh, I expect, you know, it's going to be a rough year for everybody and trying to figure out whether we're there. And I think we just get into it and see where we go. Uh, but hopefully we spend some more time outside. There's been articles written about it. We'll see if that comes to fruition in Rutland Town, that we do end up spending more time outside. But my thought was, I had talked to Alex from Carpenter and Costin, uh, who had, uh, I just chatted with him about, uh, ticks. Some of the neighbors around the area had reported that issue and so they do have, uh, the ability to spray for ticks. And so my request would be for the board for both 1,200 bucks for, uh, Kyle Taylor and Taylor Tree, but also to use under the maintenance funds, uh, to allow Carpenter and Costin to do a one-time spray or at least around the field, around the playground area, and then a little bit on the trails. And then I can coordinate that or the principals can, uh, with Carpenter and Costin to do the tick spraying there at the school. I'm guessing just a few hundred bucks for something like that. But anyway, those were the two requests I had for the board and it's up to you guys on those things.
Okay, Matt, if I could ask, you said that, um, we had given you, I think, 5,000 and you said you ran over about 3,000 on that?
Yeah, we're somewhere in that neighborhood. It's hard to tell. I've had so many personal expenses out here. 600 I just paid for the chips to Gagne. I paid people cash. Uh, I'm tracking the receipts. Uh, Taylor finished his day today. Uh, I've had Augie and Darren, I'm working on the 1,400, so I'm not sure where they are. You know, Taylor Tree, three days at 1,200 apiece, that's 3,600 dollars. We finished the third day today. So Taylor's, uh, used up 3,600 of the money. That leaves us 1,400. And that is, I pretty much have designated an earmark for Darren and Augie who's running the tractor. They're up there cutting all the time. Uh, Augie has given us a tremendous amount of money. He has taken those logs away. We're giving them to a sugar maper, or a sugar maper. So he is, uh, able to, you know, obviously produce maple syrup or syrup by using the wood, uh, that we're getting there. And for me, it's kind of twofold. It wasn't wood we were going to make money off. Uh, it was more a burden to us. And so I actually had a, a second project I took on at the same time, uh, that was involved in this. And this is the trail system. The, uh, Mike Rowe had come to me and talked about doing the soccer expansion because Byron's going to be repaving the driveway, uh, the whole parking lot out front and all that fill, uh, can be used to expand the field. So in the middle of creating the trail heads, both at the ba- back of the field, um, we are also expanding the soccer field and we cut out about 40 feet of trees. That's ended up taking the majority of my money, unfortunately. And so the, uh, the Byron could drop that. So we are at 3,600 for Taylor Tree, 1,400 earmarked for Augie, uh, and the other guy, Ann Gordon Brown. And I know I'm already probably over that already. Um, so we're in between 7,000 and 8,000 right now and I'm just covering that.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to figure it out in my head. Um, I'd like to make a motion that the board designate another 3,000 for the back area, especially with COVID. Um, these additional classroom spaces are going to be, you know, just wonderful. Um, so I make a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second it. It's Corinne.
Okay, Corinne. I'll open it up for discussion, guys.
I just also want to let you know that we've had an unanticipated expense out back with, uh, poison parsnip. And we've had that, we've had it sprayed now twice and they're going to come in next week and pull what they've sprayed. So just so you know that we've had that unexpected expense.
Okay, no, that's okay. That's well worth it. We don't want anybody to get into that. Um, any more discussion on the additional 3,000 for the back area? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
And then, uh, Lynette, if I could, just to clarify, uh, can I include the tick in that, the tick spraying with that?
Yeah, well, I thought maybe, did you have additional, if I give you additional three, do you have enough to do it?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that, that's extremely generous. Thank you guys very much. Uh, the place is going to look great out there. Uh, it's just one more day at Taylor Tree and you guys are going to have a whole nother school out back. Uh, it's just incredible. And I want to, you know, it's, it's been wonderful out there working. I've enjoyed it. I'm having a good time and, uh, but at the same time, I've been healthy. I'm down to about 195 pounds from 220. So it's been a good thing for me. I've enjoyed working with those people out there. Uh, but the one thing I've been really happy about is what Corinne Rodrique did with the hockey shed, you know, as we've been going around that. Um, I'd like to take care of that field as well. Uh, Taylor Tree, I've been going and just working for free with them to drag more brush to the chipper, uh, and speed things up. Uh, but as we've been there, it's been really great. You know, we started, you know, three years ago with cutting the brush around that old red shed that had been forgotten about and was rotting away. Uh, and so with the starting of that brush cutting, let the Corinne coming in there and completely, you know, redoing that place. And so it's just really nice to see the entire school grounds take off from there, uh, and that amount of effort out there. So it's been, it's really great and I think it's a wonderful thing. And I think the teachers are going to appreciate having a new school, uh, right behind the playground. It used to just be a jungle as you entered the woods. Uh, kids were prevented from doing so. Now you can stand on the playground and see 50 yards into the woods, uh, without an issue. It's, we've gotten rid of everything. So, yeah, that's going to also cut down on the bugs. And it's going to cut down on the bugs and the ticks and all those other issues. And, you know, having the poisonous plants we discovered around the school and got rid of those as well. Uh, so it's just really great to, uh, be, you know, bringing that school back around to where it was, you know, I guess 20 years ago before it started to grow back up. That's what we were estimating, about 20, 30 years of growth, uh, that's taking place out there. And, uh, so anyway, it's been a great thing and I'm, I'm really thankful for Corinne and getting that shed up because we've all commented on it as we've been there, that, uh, what used to be an old shed in the bushes is now a completely painted, you know, shed that could be used for hockey. It could be used for cross-country skiing. It's got a heat pump on it. We've got stadium lights out there now, uh, that whether people know it or not, they're turning on at night and lighting up the whole field. They're automatically coming on. So. Anyway, it's been a really great thing and I hope more people are getting involved in the back of the school. It's a pretty great place. So thank you guys very much for that extra money.
And Matt, if you could, um, maybe get a list, because we've had so many people help you and so many companies. If you could just get a list together, so maybe we can put something on the website, maybe a picture even, um, so the voters can see what has become of that land. Um, it can only be good for us.
Yeah, that would be great. I had Tommy Grace there today. They gave us an excavator from 11 to 4 o'clock. And what that excavator was able to accomplish was amazing. I expected to pay Tom around a couple of grand and Tom had told me before, you know what, this is free. Uh, but I told him we're still going to pay him some money. Uh, but anyway, so he said, if you can get my name out there, that's great. I want to help you guys. I'm also working with Tom over at Grover. Uh, but anyway, they really accomplished something today, which was amazing to be in there. And, uh, they really did a great job. So I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. And don't forget to put in there that you could use help.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on, on the property?
Nothing.
Does anyone else have any old business? I don't believe we have any new business. Now, if my board members would put on their thinking hat, where next meeting would actually, um, is the 14th of September, I would like to meet before school opens. Um, so I'm looking at maybe the week before the holiday. Teachers, do you have any, um, ideas? Chris, do you have any meetings scheduled for the 31st?
I'm looking right now, uh, of... No, 31st is fine.
Board members, is it okay to have a special meeting? Well, that would be our second meeting of the month. So we wouldn't, it wouldn't be a special, but for the 31st, which would be on Monday?
That's fine.
I'm fine with those dates.
Okay.
That works for me.
Oh, awesome. Matt, how about you?
I'm open. I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, Tim?
I'm good.
Okay, why don't we plan on August 31st being our next meeting? It will be in person and it'll be at 6:00 PM. And Chris, where do you want to have it? Do you want it at the super, well, we probably could have it in the cafeteria if we can.
Yes, I think that'd be good.
Okay. Is that going to be okay, Deb and Sarah? Is the cafeteria open?
I'll have to check on that, see what's set up in there. For tapestry, might be all set up in there, so that might be more of a challenge, so.
Right. So I'm not sure if that, or we can go into the library because we aren't planning on using that right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, maybe we could have it at the library. Either way, the in-person will be at the school at 6:00 PM on August 31st, which is on Monday. I'm sorry, what?
We'll find a location.
Okay, great. Is there any reason for executive session?
I have one, I have one thing to discuss in executive session, Lynette. It'll be quick.
Okay, would that be, okay, would it be personnel?
Yes.
What, what do you do under personnel?
Personnel, yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session due to personnel reasons.
Okay, how about, how about a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear everybody. I heard one aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that'll be unanimous. Thank you, everybody that, from the public that is on the line. Um, we're going to disconnect at this time so we can go into executive session.
Okay. And Debbie and Sarah, if you wouldn't mind joining us as well. Okay, thank you.
Hey, guys, can I just confirm, are you not having a September meeting then?
Uh, no, I think September is still on. We're going to have to...